County City Council for December thirteenth, twenty twenty one is now in session. Roll call, please.
Council President, Mr. Akaro.
Present.
Mr. Emery.
Here.
Mr. Gah.
Here.
Mr. Kozowski.
Here.
Mrs. Leiford.
Here.
Mr. Moiseo.
Here.
Mr. Perkowski.
Present.
City Manager, Mr. Hockaday.
Here.
Finance Director, Mr. Williams.
Here.
May please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Josh Crenns.
With the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Akaro, Mr. Hockaday, Mr. Williams, City Council. I thank you for this opportunity to introduce Mr. Josh Crenns, our pastor at Good Shepherd Lutheran Church. Thank you.
Let us pray. Gracious God, who we call by many names, bless our cities and make them places of safety for all people, rich and poor. Give us grace to work for cities where neighborhoods remain vibrant and whole, where the lost and forgotten in society are supported, and where the arts flourish. Make the diverse fabric of this city a delight to all who live and visit here and a strong bond uniting people around common goals for the good of all. We lift up before you all who govern the city of Connyat, especially President Akaro, the council members, Mr. Gah, Mr. Moseo Junior, Mr. Emery, Mr. Kozowski, Ms. Ledford, Mr. Per Kowski, as well as Mr. Williams, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Hockaday. May those who hold power understand that this is a trust from you to be used, not for personal glory or profit, but for the service of the people. Dry from us cynicism, selfishness, and corruption. Grant in your mercy just and honest government, and give us grace to live together in unity and peace. Bless especially the public servants in this government council and in this city of Connyat. That those who may do their work in the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, help them to use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote our common life. We pray all these things in the name of the one who is greater and above all. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Crenns. We do have an awards presentation this evening as well, and with us in chambers tonight is our Spartan of the Month, Leanna Louts. Would you like to come forward with your family? Right over here.
Yes, right on the X.
Ms. Akaro, if you could read the certificate of the record, please.
Certificate of Achievement, Spartan of the Month. The Spartan of the Month for December is Leanna Louts. Leanna is a student at Connyat High School. Her nominating teacher, Mr. Eric Hodges, wrote, "Leanna is the true definition of a Spartan. She is a hard worker, has great school spirit, is involved in many extracurricular activities, and is just an overall great person. She comes to school every day prepared and ready to learn. She always has a positive attitude in spite of a busy schedule in and outside of school. Leanna exhibits those qualities that make her representative of what it means to be a true Spartan, dated this thirteenth day of December and signed Councilmember Joseph Emery and Nicholas Perkowski."
Congratulations on your achievements.
Thank you.
To show your appreciation for your achievements. So, I think our appreciation. Do you want to introduce your?
These are my parents, Rich Louts and Ann Louts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
And moving on to approval of the meeting minutes for November twenty second, twenty twenty one. Are there any alterations or corrections? Now, is there a motion?
Make a motion. Second.
Eric Akaro.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Gah.
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Leiford.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Perkowski.
Yes.
Okay, the meeting minutes for November twenty second, twenty twenty one have been approved. Want to citizen comments? Does anybody have any citizen comments?
None.
Okay, hearing none communications.
I have none this evening.
Is council have any communications? Okay, hearing none there either. Move on to work of the administration, beginning with City Manager, Mr. Hockaday.
Council President Akaro, I don't have a full typed report for you this evening, as we've met many times throughout the last week or two. I did want to share with you some of our COVID numbers that Michelle was able to share with us. Our current active cases are at ninety-one. That's down from one hundred and nineteen cases in the prior week. However, we seem to be on this kind of a little roller coaster of high numbers. Going back to November sixteen, ninety-nine cases, the twenty-second, one hundred and twenty-two cases, the twenty-ninth, ninety-nine cases, the sixth, one hundred and nineteen cases, and we're at ninety-one cases. So, we anticipate a little bit of a rise this next week, as that has been the trend. I would say the more troubling trend during that same period of time, we've had six COVID deaths here in Connyat related to that. I believe the youngest was forty-two. So, in that, the Connyat Health Department has announced their dates for their next several COVID booster clinics. And the next one being tomorrow, Tuesday, December fourteenth, from two to four P. M. Those are on a walk-in basis. So, if you've already been vaccinated, they do ask that you bring your vaccination card with you so they can add the booster to it and see what you've had and make sure it's appropriate in terms of timing. The next one after the fourteenth will be Wednesday, December twenty-second. That's from nine-thirty A. M. to eleven-thirty A. M. And then the subsequent one will be Friday, January seventh, from eight A. M. to ten A. M. So, those are the next couple clinics. I would tell you vaccines are widely available. Gertie's Pharmacy, Rite Aid, CVS locally, there are a number of different options for you. Most of those are on a walk-in basis, though it might be a good idea to call ahead in advance if you're looking for a specific booster, whether that be Pfizer, Moderna. So, you can reach out and determine which one's the best and most suitable for you. So, that's the biggest thing that I want to remind people of is, is just take basic precautions. The Connyat University Hospitals has just been overwhelmed with cases. I know even last week, they had twenty-one people in-house with six in the ICU. So, those are, those are overwhelming numbers for a hospital of our size, and they are not sufficiently staffed to maintain that for very long periods of time, which we've been dealing with these level numbers for, for nearly a month now. So, just encouragement, go out, get your vaccine. If you've already had your vaccine, you're in that six-to-eight-month window, consider getting a booster. The only other update, which I know we've talked about this in our work session, as we've talked about a number of things in our prior work session. We did receive notification of a grant award from the state of Ohio's Water and Sewer Grants from the ARPA dollars. The state of Ohio donated two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars statewide. Connyat was very fortunate to be selected with the Buffalo Street Sanitary Sewer Project for a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars in funding. So, we were the only construction grant awarded in Asheville County so far. So, again, very thankful. We had several other submissions, and I'd like to acknowledge Brian Bidwell, Superintendent of the Waste Water Department, that aided in the submission of all these grants. I think he did a great job and appreciate all his assistance in turning that around. This was driven by state legislature appropriation, and there was a very short turnaround window. So, Brian was Johnny on the spot and helping us pull all that together and get it submitted to the state. So, and it did bear fruit for us. So, we're very thankful for that. And other than that, I'm happy to offer council any other updates, but I don't have a big formal written report, as I generally do.
Council have any questions?
Mr. Hockaday, patchwork on where Dominion was working around Saint Mary's Church West. Have they addressed that? I haven't been down the road.
I haven't been down there to look at what they've done. Again, we asked them about addressing some of those patches. The asphalt plants are closed. We recommended to them to bring them up in a temporary concrete patch until next year, and then they'll have to pull them back out and put them in asphalt prior to the Millenfield project. That's where I left it. I have not heard from Jerry Rockney, our inspector, on that in terms of that specific action item. I will follow up and let you know, though.
Thank you.
Mr. Hockaday, along the single lines is that, have they given you any approximate completion date of this phase?
So, the stuff here, I don't have an exact timeline, but they're nearly finished. I believe they're working on restoration as well as some individual reconnections. Now, there are a couple other little streets that will be off of the main drag here that they've yet to complete. So, I'm expecting probably about another month or so on those projects, but they will not be on route proper. There's a couple back on Chestnut and some other areas that they'll be addressing. So, it'll be off the beaten path a little bit.
Okay, thanks. All right, move on to Finance Director, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Akaro. I passed out a couple sheets of paper for you to review. I know we have been discussing at the work session, water and sewer rates potentially for next year. And this is the form that I had discussed earlier in our meeting. I believe I've given this to council before, but just as a reminder, we have to file these with the Ohio Water Development Authority to show that our rates are sufficient to cover our operating expenses and our debt service. So, for twenty twenty, we had our water fund, and you have to report your cumulative prior year surplus. These are unexpended funds, not unencumbered funds. So, the unencumbered funds are obviously lower than the cash balances that we have here, but they do not require that we report that. The gross for the water fund was about two-point-four-five million, about two-point-four-three-three for the sewer fund. So, they're pretty similar in our collections. Operations and maintenance were also similar, about one-point-nine-six million for the water and about one-point-nine-one million for the sewer. Our annual debt service, though, is, excuse me, dramatically different for the water than the sewer fund. The water fund at this time has about one-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand in annual debt service. The sewer fund about five-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand. So, the total expenses for the water were last year about two-point-one million, about two-point-four-seven million for the sewer fund. So, what they're looking at is net revenue. Are you generating enough revenue? You're not working off a fund balance to pay for your operations. So, with the water fund, we had net revenue of about three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand. The sewer fund had a negative net revenue of forty-two thousand. Now, it's not significant. There's a significant fund balance in there, but as we discussed, there are significant capital needs in the sewer department. If you look at the date of the last increase, the, for this report was one-one-twenty. Actually, for the water, it was one-one-twenty-one, but for this report purposes, it was one-one-twenty. The sewer fund, the last increase was one-one-twenty-seventeen. So, we have not had an increase for four years in that fund. The average amount of the last increase was three percent, two percent for the sewer fund. And as I discussed, we didn't actually raise it a percent. We raised it twenty cents. And that was for the OMR, Operations Maintenance or Replacement. We are not adjust for the administrative departments, nor did we adjust for debt service. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that. I think I, like I said, I gave that to you before, but just in case I didn't. And then for our ordinance tonight, for the Port Authority, one oh eight twenty-one, this is a note issued on behalf of the Port Authority. The city of Connyat backs this. It's as a general obligation bond or note. Our original amount that we loaned on behalf of the, the Port Authority was four-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand last year, at a rate of one-point-eight-six percent. They are proposing to reduce the principal amount by thirty-two thousand. The interest will be eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-six, so total principal and interest of forty thousand, one forty-six eighty. How that worked in the original is the city issued the note on behalf of the Port Authority, and we distributed the proceeds to the port. The port still has whatever proceeds are left, whatever they've used, but they will not receive other proceeds. They'll just, will reissue that bond on their, or that note on their behalf for four-hundred-and-six thousand. So, the four-hundred-and-six thousand proceeds will be offset with the four-hundred-and-thirty-eight. That's the principal reduction. So, next year, you'll have the principal reduction, and I just estimated this. I haven't talked to the Port Authority, but in the past, they generally paid down about ten percent of the outstanding principal at any one time. The interest rate actually dropped a little bit to one-point-seven-three. That's the estimate at this time. So, their interest would probably drop about a thousand dollars, and a forty-thousand-dollar principal reduction would leave three-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand at the end of next year. And then that amount would be, you know, reissued at that amount, or they could, you know, further pay that down. So, I just wanted to give you an overview. So, when you vote on that ordinance tonight, you have the information.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the Finance Director? Okay, thank you. Move on to the Law Director, Mr. Smith.
No reports tonight.
Okay. Move on to our reports of committees. Does anybody have a committee report? Hearing none liaison reports.
I have one report this evening, Mr. Akaro. The Connyat Cable Advisory Board met December first, twenty twenty-one, and here's some, just a bit of a summary of what went on in the meeting. They did meet at noon at the Connyat Public Library. Coordinator, Mr. Galvin, announced that some locally-produced public access programs are now available online for twenty-four-seven access via the city of Connyat website. You click the C A T dash TV under the department's heading. The on-demand is also accessible via the Connyat Cable TV's Facebook page and B M E O. It's B I M E O. I'm not savvy with that, so excuse me if I mispronounce that. Archiving for the on-demand viewing, much of C A B's locally-produced program of the last ten years is a monumental task, and that will take many months. Right now, city council meetings and school board meetings are accessible, along with some recent Around the Town with Chuck programming and other interviews, shows of Connyat Christmas parade, and then D-Day programs. The Cable Advisory Board seeks feedback, especially with regard to what programs viewers would like available in this early phase of moving to on-demand. Mr. Galvin stresses that this is still very much under construction. Keep in mind that the on-demand programming is different from regular weekly programming available on cable channel six and one zero two four. The cable operation and weekly programming will not change. Cable TV is always seeking for volunteers. The board, recognizing the many hours of the Connyat School Sports Play-by-Play by Mr. Wayne Heinonen, who passed away last month. He will be missed. Cab will meet at noon, Wednesday, January twenty-sixth, at the public library. Thank you. That is all.
Okay, thank you. Any other liaison reports? Okay, hearing none. Move on to our ordinances and resolutions for this evening. We have five ordinances on the table. We will begin with ordinance eighty-eight twenty. Is there any update on that?
No update, sir.
Okay. Moving on to ordinance ninety-six twenty-one.
Mr. Akaro, I'd like to make a motion to move ninety-six dash twenty-one, as amended, off of the table.
There's a motion to move ordinance ninety-six twenty-one, as amended, off the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Akaro.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Gah.
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Leiford.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Perkowski.
Yes. Hey, Mr. Moiseo, the ordinance is off the table.
I need to make a motion to move it to second reading, because that takes it to first reading.
No. It's, it's been read once. You can read it, and it will move then to second. This would be at second reading, so you can move it, so it moved, excuse me. It's been read once. If you read it again tonight, it'll be read twice. You don't have to move it to a second reading. It automatically goes to a second reading or a third reading unless you either table it or suspend the three reading.
All right. So, then I'm going to need to move it to, make a motion to move it to a third reading?
No, just let it.
Do anything.
You have to do anything.
Okay.
Just read it. Yeah. I think it was read, so.
Okay.
It's read.
All right. That's what I was getting at. Okay.
And I think she needs to have to, do you want me to read the captioning, correct?
Yes.
In ordinance, amend section one-one-three-seven-point-zero-seven of the city of Connyat Codified Ordinances Governing Procedure, General Specific Criteria for Conditional Uses and Not Declaring an Emergency.
Okay, Mr. Smith, you have any update on that as far as the amendment?
You're going to have to refresh my recollection. What amendment are you referring to?
The, it's revised. What was the revision?
Yes, okay, yes, yes. Thank you. You, the ordinance you have has that change in it. I just had it there. Excuse me just a minute. This is on the conditional uses, bed and breakfast, bottom of page five of the ordinance. Do you have it there? Do you have it?
Yes.
Okay. So, what it says here is, "All owners of a bed and bre-," and this is part of the conditional criteria, that they have to be current on all transient lodging taxes due to city as provided in chapter one ninety-three of the Codified Ordinances. So, if that's what you want to do, then someone needs to make a motion to amend it to that effect, and then next week, we'll go back to second reading, or next meeting, we'll go back to second reading.
Okay.
Or you can table it or do whatever you want to do.
Actually, when, he, he did say, "As amended."
So, can't we just move it off the table as amended?
Well, you haven't amended it yet. There's been no vote on the amendment.
Okay, so.
So, you need, someone needs to make a motion to amend.
Okay, I got it. Okay.
I, paragraph two, subparaphrase E, to include the language that's written in, in bold and rose underline.
Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion, again, to amend ordinance ninety-six twenty-one, as amended, per paragraph two, section E, on page five of section one-one-three-seven-oh-seven of the city of Connyat Codified Ordinances Governing Procedure, General Specific Criteria for Conditional Uses. That cover it, Tom?
Read, read the actual language.
Okay, so, section E, the amended. "All owners of a bed and breakfast, or short-term rental, shall be current on all transient lodging taxes due to the city, as provided in chapter one ninety-three of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Con-" That's paragraph two, section E.
So, it's been moved.
All second.
Mr. Akaro.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Gah.
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Leiford.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Perkowski.
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Moiseo, the amendment, amendment has been approved.
So, now are you going to make a motion to move it to second or third reading?
I, I think it stays in second. It will stay in the second reading because you've amended it.
So, I leave it alone.
You leave it alone, or you can go back and table it, because you still have to refer this to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Planning Commission has to meet and review it, and then they send it back, and then you have to have a, you have to give a thirty-day notice on a hearing, public hearing on these changes. And then at that point, you can vote on it. So.
Okay, got it.
This could be voted on sometime probably in February.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Akaro, to table ordinance ninety-six twenty-one, as amended?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance ninety-six twenty-one. Or is a motion to table? Do we need to vote on the table? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Akaro.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Gah.
Yes.
Mr. Kozowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Leiford.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Perkowski.
Yes.
Hey, ordinance ninety-six twenty-one is back on the tape as amended.
And it will now go to the Planning Commission?
You have to send it there, yes.
Okay, moving on to ordinance ninety-seven twenty-one.
In ordinance, amend section one-one-zero-three-point-zero-one, definitions of the city of Connyat Codified Ordinances and Not Declaring an Emergency.
Hey, Mr. Smith, the revision on that one?
Okay, this is found on page 6 of the ordinance. Under the definition of hotel. And because hotel is used throughout this. We're including within the definition of hotel, bed and breakfast, and a short-term rental. It's just a clean, cleaning up.
Okay.
You go through the same procedure as you did the last one.
I think I got it down now, Kyle.
Go Terry.
Any questions or comments regarding this ordinance? All right, Mr. Procoski.
We have to take it off the table first, right?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to take 9721 off the table.
There's a motion to remove ordinance 9721 from the table.
Second.
Mr. Arcaro.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Kazowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Lightford.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Procoski.
Yes.
And Mr. Procoski, the ordinance has been removed from the table.
I'd like to move to amend ordinance 96, 9721.
There's a
specify that where.
Yes.
This number four.
It's on page 6, page 6. It's in the definition section.
In the definition section of hotel. The amendment reads, every establishment, including bed and breakfast and short-term rentals, as defined section 1133.01, kept, used, maintained, advertised, or held out to the public to be placed where sleeping accommodations are offered to guests in which one or more rooms are used for the accommodation of such guests, whether such rooms room or rooms are in one of several structures.
Okay, there's a motion to amend ordinance 9721 as indicated by Mr. Procoski. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Arcaro.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Kazowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Lightford.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Procoski.
Yes.
I could move ordinance 9721 back to the table.
I'll second.
Mr. Arcaro.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Kazowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Lightford.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Procoski.
Yes.
Hey, ordinance 9721 has been taped. So the remaining ordinance is on the table. 97, 98, and 99 have no updates.
I think you just updated 97, so 98, 99.
Right. So that would remain on the table. That brings us to our second reading ordinances, and we have one to consider in second reading.
Ordinance 10221 and ordinance to amend section 192.081, credit for other municipal taxes of the City of Kineak Codified Ordinances and not declaring an emergency.
Okay. Mr. Williams.
Oh, this, this would eliminate the portion of the credit that the city currently provides to residents that work in another community and pay taxes to another community. Right now, the credit is 100% up to 1.65%. So just for example, if you worked in a community that had a 2% income tax rate, you would not get the full 2% credit, but you would get up to 1.65. This would reduce that credit in half. So rather than get the 100%, you would get the half of the credit or 0.825% credit. So it's, you would receive 50% credit and 50% would be eliminated through this ordinance. As we had discussed, any proceeds, which I've estimated at this time to be around $200,000, and I gave you the, the breakdown, would be allocated specifically for the street department. So if council approved that, we would, of course, make those changes to that formula. So any proceeds that we receive would directly go to and be deposited into the Public Works Department or the Street Department.
Any questions or comments regarding this ordinance? And Mr. Moiseo?
Mr. Arcaro, I'd like to make a motion to table ordinance 102-21.
There's a motion to table ordinance 102-21. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Arcaro.
No.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
No.
Mr. Kazowski.
No.
Mrs. Lightford.
No.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Procoski.
No.
Okay, Mr. Moiseo, the motion has failed.
So, Mr. Smith, I will make a motion to move to third reading?
No, you don't have to do anything. It will automatically go there unless you suspend the three reading rule.
Gotcha, okay.
Hey, ordinance 102-21 has been moved to a third reading. Okay, that brings us to our first reading ordinances and resolutions, and we have five to consider this evening. We will begin with ordinance 104-21.
In ordinance to amend section 1 of ordinance number 133-07, establishing the maximum rates of pay for the following part-time positions as further described in section 1 below, effective January 1, 2022, and not declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hawke.
Okay. These don't need to pass during this meeting, but these reflect a 2% increase, which we discussed. The same is true of 105, with one noted exception that we'll cover when we get there. But it does reflect a 2% cost of living adjustment on those part-time wages.
Okay, any questions or comments regarding this ordinance? Is there a motion to proceed?
Motion to suspend the three reading on ordinance 104-21.
It's a motion to suspend the three reroll on ordinance 10421. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Arcaro.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Kazowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Lightford. Yes. Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Procoski.
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Emery, the three rerolls been suspended?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to act on ordinance 104-21.
So motion to act on ordinance 104-21. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Arcaro.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Kazowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Lightford.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Procoski.
Yes.
Hey, ordinance 104 is passed. Move on to ordinance 10521.
In ordinance to amend section 1 of ordinance number 21-04, to set the maximum rates of pay effective as of January 1, 2022 for such positions, as further described in section 1 below, and not declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hawke.
Generally speaking, these represents a 2% increase. The noted exception there is the full-time law director position as being notated as not vacant. It has also been adjusted, not in line with the 2%, but with, previously discussed with the individual, $77,000. You will also note the 1 in the footnote caption has been moved from the part-time law director, law director's position to the full-time law director's position. And that notates the designation of the additional $5,000 that is paid directly from Asheville County to the law director for county services rendered. So in total, their salary would be $82,000, but only $77,000 of that comes from the city of Kineak. So do note that, under the part-time law director position for next year, the it will be noted as vacant. Kyle has announced his retirement. Mr. John Lewis is stepping up and taking that position as a full-time law director. And then consequently, the assistant law director position has also been noted in asterisk as vacant, as it's not going to be refilled. And Mr. Lewis will be assuming both responsibilities. It is a net decrease in total salary in the law office. And Kyle, thank you for your many years of service. Really appreciate it, and I'm sure we'll be talking more about that.
It's not a retirement. Making me feel old.
You are?
Let's go see who can run from here to top seven faster.
Oh, Kyle, and I go way back.
Okay, who put the hole in the basement with the shotgun?
All right.
Okay.
Don't make me use the gavel. Okay, with all those comments, are there any other comments or questions regarding this ordinance? Okay, is there a motion to proceed?
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance 105-21.
There's a motion to suspend a three reroll on ordinance 10521. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Arcaro.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Kazowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Lightford.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Procoski.
Yes.
Hey, Mrs. Lightford, the three rerolls been suspended?
This time I'd like to act on ordinance 105-21.
So motion to act on ordinance 10521. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Arcaro.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Kazowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Lightford.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Procoski.
Yes.
Hey, ordinance 10521 is passed. Move on to resolution 10620.
A resolution in opposition of amended House Bill number 175 to deregulate certain ephemeral water features under various water pollution control laws.
Okay, Mr. Hawke.
This is something that was brought to us by the Friends of the Kineak Creek and the Scenic Rivers Committee. This is legislation that was passed in House Bill 175. And what it does is it deregulates and restricts the Ohio EPA's ability to regulate ephemeral or tributary waters to all waterways in, in the state, and that includes the discharge of pollutants, stormwater, sanitary sewers, even to those ephemeral waterways. This runs counterintuitively to all the protections that we've put in place to protect drinking water and freshwater within the state of Ohio. This is kind of a, a troubling and fast-tracked piece of legislation that I think jeopardizes the excellent water quality and full water quality attainment that we have on Kineak. We've done so much to protect that waterway. It is one of Ohio's 14 wild and scenic rivers. I think this presents a, a direct threat to its water quality. And I think it's something that we as a community should speak out about in protecting water quality, particularly stuff that flows directly to the lake, which we drink. So I, I would be in full support of you know, letting our feelings know about how we feel about Kineak Creek and the other waters here in the state of Ohio and that we don't want to regress and step backwards in terms of protecting them.
Okay. Is there a motion to proceed?
I'd like to make a motion to keep with resolution number 106-21.
I'll second.
You probably should.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three reading rule for resolution number 106-21.
I'll second that also.
Mr. Arcaro.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Kazowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Lightford.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Procoski.
Yes.
Mr. Procoski, three rerolls been suspended.
I'd like to make a motion to move to act on resolution number 106-21.
It's a motion to act on resolution 10621. Is there a second?
I'll second again.
Mr. Arcaro.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Kazowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Lightford.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Procoski.
Yes.
A resolution 10621 has passed, and so, Colonel, if you could see to it that a copy of the resolution of opposition is presented to you. Move on to ordinance 10721.
In ordinance to amend section 193.01 and 193.03 of the City of Kineak Codified Ordinances Governing Transient Lodging Tax Definitions and Collection of Lodging Excise Tax and Not Declaring an Emergency.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, this just clarifies some language in the bed tax to make it more clear that it does apply to bed and breakfasts and short-term rentals.
Okay, any questions or comments regarding this ordinance? Is a motion proceed?
Mr. Arcaro, I'll make a motion to waive the three reading rule. Excuse me, an ordinance 107-21.
There's a motion to suspend a three reroll on ordinance 10721. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Arcaro.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Kazowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Lightford.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Procoski.
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Kazowski, the three rerolls been suspended?
I move we act on 107-21.
It's a motion to act on ordinance 10721. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Arcaro.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Kazowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Lightford.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Procoski.
Yes.
Hey, ordinance 10721 is passed.
Mr. Arcaro.
Mr. Moiseo.
I have a question for Mr. Smith. Hotel, in this ordinance, we just passed 10721, hotel is defined as section, in section 113301, since we tabled that. I was just looking down, I just happened to think about it.
Let me look at that.
So in ordinance 9721, that was the amended section hotel.
Let me get back to you on that.
Okay, I was just raising it, because since we tabled that definition.
Let me get back to you on that one.
Okay, move on to ordinance 10821.
The supplemental official officer certificate to the Council of the City of Kineak, Ohio, is official officer of the City The supplemental official officer certificate to the council of the city of Coniat, Ohio, as fiscal officer of the city of Coniat, a certifying connection with your proposed issue of $4,600 notes to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of providing funds in cooperation with the port authority to pay cost of A, the portion of the debt service associated with acquiring, constructing, reconstructing, and improving boat docks and slips together with all necessary pertinences comprising a part of a public marina improvement one, B, engineering and design of a transient marina together with all necessary pertinences improvement two, and C, the construction of self-storage units on Day Street, which will be open to the public together with all necessary impertinences improvement three, and together with improvement one and improvement two, the improvement that one, the estimated life or period of usefulness of the improvement is at least five years. Two, the estimated maximum maturity of the bonds calculated in accordance with section 133.20. Other revised code is 16 years for improvement one and 10 years for improvements two and three. Being my estimate, the life or period of usefulness of the improvement, if notes in anticipation of the bonds are outstanding later than the last day of December of the fifth year, following the year of issuance of the original issue of notes for such improvement, the period in excess of those five years shall be deducted from the maximum maturity of the bonds. Three, the maximum maturity of the notes for improvement one is December 31, 2032, being the last day of the 20th year from the date of the original issue of notes issued for this purpose. And a maximum maturity of the notes for improvements two and three is the last day of the 15th year from the date of the original issue of notes issued for this purpose. Signed John Williams, Director of Finance, December 13. And then we have an ordinance providing for the issuance of sale $406,000 notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay costs of, in cooperation with the Coniat Port Authority, A, a portion of the debt service associated with acquiring, constructing, reconstructing, improving boat docks and slips together with all necessary pertinences comprising a part of a public marina, B, the cost of engineering and design of a transient marina together with all necessary pertinences, and C, the cost of the construction of self-storage units on Day Street, which will be open to the public together with all necessary pertinences and declaring an emergency.
Okay. And you heard Mr. Williams' explanation earlier. So is there a motion to proceed?
Mr. Carroll, I'd like to waive the three reading rule on ordinance 108-21.
There's a motion to suspend a three reroll on ordinance 10821. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Gah.
Yes.
Mr. Kozeski.
Yes.
Mrs. Leifert.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Prokaski.
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Moiseo, the three rerolls been suspended?
I'd like to declare ordinance 108-21 an emergency.
There's a motion to declare ordinance 10821 an emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Gah.
Yes.
Mr. Kozeski.
Yes.
Mrs. Leifert.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Prokaski.
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Moiseo, the emergency has been declared.
I'd like to make a motion to act on ordinance 108-21.
There's a motion to act on ordinance 10821. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Gah.
Yes.
Mr. Kozeski.
Yes.
Mrs. Leifert.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Prokaski.
Yes.
Hey, ordinance 10821 has passed. And that concludes our ordinances and resolutions for this evening. Move on to unfinished and old business. Hearing none miscellaneous business. And hearing none there either. Brings us to a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Mr. Emery.
Yes.
Mr. Gah.
Yes.
Mr. Kozeski.
Yes.
Mrs. Leifert.
Yes.
Mr. Moiseo.
Yes.
Mr. Prokaski.
Yes.
Hey, City Council for December 13.